Too late, Blaine has one.
Just reading through there, just wondering how the Wildland Response Unit thing is coming, because they see we've been fighting the odd fire and is it done, ready?
No, that's gonna be, that was September, wasn't it?
Well, it's supposed to be done already.
But it's behind. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as far as I know, the unit is still on backorder. I think there are certain parts that are holding up the production of that vehicle. So the majority of the vehicle is ready to be shipped out, but there's still a few minor things that is holding it up. So it's not here yet.
Tires.
Tires, yeah.
Richard?
For those gravel trucks that keep not showing up, are they gonna honor the price from 2021? Have you got them locked in? Because there's gotta be, they gotta be squealing on that end, I'm thinking.
Yeah, through the chair. That was a, there was a little bit of, they weren't gonna honor the price. And it wasn't with the trucks, it was with the accessories on the trucks. And then we, we had some lengthy conversations, and so it's all good. They're gonna be here in the next five weeks. And they've honored the price. And that, that conversation's had to go all the way to New York to do with the head of Mack Trucks, and so they ate the cost.
That's impressive. Shane?
So I apologize, Kim, I couldn't make it to that infrared heater demonstration on last, on the 29th. I was busy. How did it go?
Through the chair. I've been to a couple of those demonstrations, and maybe if I could have the two councillors that showed up describe how, what they thought of the process.
We can hold off on that until we get to the chief executives, where it's all in. No reports. This is just on finance. But good question, we'll make sure we get it for you, Shane. Any other questions on the financials? Michelle's moving them. Vote. Carrie? This is one. CAO report, Terlen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Starting on page 13 is the CAO report, the recommended motion that council approved the CAO report as presented. Is there any questions?
Okay, well, answer Shane's question, which were the councillors that went to?
Richard and Lloyd.
Which one of you would like to take that? Lloyd, you're the important one today. Richard, just threw you under the bus.
Well, okay. There was quite a few people that showed up. What I was impressed with, and I know Shane is much more experienced and has knowledge with road and that kind of equipment than I do, but for a guy who doesn't have a lot of knowledge on it, really impressed me because two guys could operate it. It's all one unit. They have a hot box on it. They even bring you the puck, the oil for it. All the tools are on it. There's a portable packer that's on there, and there's a crane or winch, whatever you want to call it, that's on there. And they took, took it off. Two guys took the unit off, the heating unit off, put it over a hole in the parking lot, and it was in four minutes that it melted. And they had the hot box already running, and they filled that hole up, just the two of them. And it did a fantastic job. And then they used the crane and took the packer off, and it was done within, I'm gonna say 15 minutes, something like that, cleaning it all up and putting the excess stuff back in the hot box. And the guy explained that you can even use it during the wintertime, that they used it or did a demonstration when it was 25 below. But it would take like around 10 minutes, he said, to heat the pavement up when it's that cold. And they cleaned the hole out, and I believe there was two blowers with it, wasn't it, Richard, I think, that come with it, two, to clean the holes out, or the cracks, whatever you're doing. And so I was talking to Kim at the site, and then asking him how many people we use and how much equipment. And just in the labor and the equipment, I can see this thing saving us money. And I mean, for road repairs, that's got my vote. I, I like it. I mean, the cost is up there, but maybe Kim can get us a good deal again.
Richard, did you want to add anything to it?
Yeah, I think it's perfect, too, for if you have a valve in the middle of the road, like for the water, water shut offs, and also any manholes that are sticking up. It's, it's a great way to bring the asphalt back up to the proper level, so we don't worry about the plows hitting it, hitting them and breaking stuff. It was an impressive display, and I think once, the more you use it, the more you would, you'd probably find other places for it. But right now, when you watch, I'm gonna use the city, they have a pothole, they, they kinda dig it out a little bit, mostly by hand, throw some ash, or some cold mix in it, and two days later you drive by, and of course, it's pounded out again. For this one, it takes a bigger area, so it gets all the fracture that's around the pothole. So it does a more complete area. And when it was done, it was smooth, there was no, nothing to it. I, I think it's well worth it. We, I think you'd find maybe that you'd put a couple of maybe students on in the spring, you would keep them going right till fall. So to me, it'd be a good buy. Good investment.
Kim? Michelle?
I was just gonna say, I saw this, the presentation last year, and I thought the same thing. What I was impressed with was the fact that two guys can do it, versus a whole paving crew sending them out to do these things. I just think it was, and it would be great for all our new trails to keep them up and going.
Kim?
Thank you, through the chair, I'll just follow up. One of the things that, that was, that I felt very interesting was, we had a representative from the county of Lethbridge. And so he asked them, and so another thing is, when you're heating one spot, and after you're working on it, when you move it over, so your, your heats are always continuous. So then you're not, like, it's not four minutes, and then you're waiting for the next spot. You're doing that repair, that packing, and the other spot's already being heated up. So, so you're always working. So it takes four minutes to do actual a repair, instead of, you know, the longer time. But one of the things that the county of Lethbridge asked them to do was to put the infrared heater over the curb and gutter, about two inches. And then, because that's where all our hamlets, where you get that breaking away from the, from the cement's curbs, and you see that's all, that's where it's all, but he repaired that in four minutes, and it looked like it welded right to the curb. And I'm like, he says that's where he's gonna see value, and I think that's where we would keep somebody busy for the whole, whole summer, just fixing along the curb and gutters, because that's where you eat all the weeds and everything else. And, and that would really prevent the water from penetrating into the road that way. That's where I see lots of value in there, too.
Shane?
All right. How many curbs and gutters, kilometers of that do we really have in our hamlets? If you do your patches right, which I have yet to see us do it right anywhere, is you need tackle. I've done a lot of patches, guys, lots. You still need your sign people, you still need your signs when you're on the road, you still need extra people. You dig out your hole, and there's a thing called tack oil, which we don't use, because I watched it on, being done on the black and white. We got a crew out there, throwing cold mix in a hole, tire pack it, and drive away. Week later, it's blown out. I took pictures yesterday again of it. I drive down that road all the time. If you do it right, and I'm saying you get tack oil, and tack oil, when it's done properly, is tacky. When you put your foot on it, it's like glue. That's what bonds your cold mix to your existing structure. And we're not using it. And I don't know why, but we like going back and fixing and refixing and refixing. This infrared heater, you need a lot, Lethbridge has a lot more paved highways than we do. It has its purpose, yes, but it's an expensive machine. You still need tack oil to bond. You can heat it up in the wintertime. We've went out and done patches, Ken can testify to this, all of a sudden, a mud flap will show up on a highway that come off of a truck, and all of a sudden, you got a hole. So you can take your tack oil out there, and you can heat it with a propane torch. And it heats up and gets hot and sticky, and you can throw your cold mix in, pack it with a plate tamper, which we should be using instead of tires, and it's done. You still, even with this machine, you still need your, if you're out on the highway, you still need your signs, you still need your flag people, and that. It's just not two people running out there and doing it. You still need a crew. But for the amount of highways we got, the amount of curb and gutter we really got, something to really think about. We don't have a bunch of it. And that's why I really question this machine, because I worked with one, and we parked it, and it didn't really work. I know this has all your mix and everything all with it, that you can mix it, that's the advantage of it. But can you really, is it really worth it for the amount of highways we got? That's my opinion.
Well, I think it's a big difference there. I understand what you're saying, you guys had one, but you guys were the big players that used big pavers, big, you, when you guys went in to fix stuff, you fixed stuff properly. This is to fix hamlets and streets and hamlets, so it's more for the little guys like we are. Like, if you're bringing in a big company to do all of our repairs, if we subcontract all that out, we'd expect them to come in and do it properly, correct?
No, you, for the amount of repairs you've done, you've repaved stuff fields, you got a good asphalt in all these hamlets, the amount of repairs you're really doing, sure, it melts, it round, but like I'm saying, if you use tack oil, and that, it's not a big, we did a lot of little patches. We did townwork, we did city work, and we had to go back, we had our warranty, there's lots of times where the mud flops come out and haunt the hell out of you. But no, it's that, the only advantage of this machine, really, is that it'll mix your mix for you and heat it up right there. But what I'm getting at, how many, how much roads do we really have to warrant it? You won't keep it busy all year long. There's not enough potholes unless you're gonna start taking it out onto all the oiled roads and doing every pothole on the oil.
Okay, Michelle?
But it's not just roads. We have all these new trails we're doing, and, and like Kim said, the curb and gutter, where the pavement meets the curbs. There's a lot of hamlets that probably could use that. I know at my house, it does exactly, I got trees growing out between the curb and the pavement, because it's not sealed there. So, I don't know, I think there's a lot more than what you're saying. It's not just roads.
Richard? Richard?
Yeah, I'll, this is on?
Yep.
I'll still argue with, against, with Shane on this, only because I really, really like the idea that it's doing a bigger area than just the immediate patch. And I understand your tack oil part of it, but that does not pick up the fracture that's around it where this machine does. And, yeah, you don't need to keep it year, busy year round. You won't use it in the wintertime, just like we don't do a lot of other things, unless it was a really bad hole. But there's, there's manholes to fix, there's valve things that, if you don't keep on top of them, you, when you do have to turn the water off, you can't get the rod down. Like, I think you're wrong. I think this is a pretty impressive machine.
Nobody's right or wrong, we're just having a discussion on whether we should buy it or not. Terlen?
So, Mr. Chairman and council, perhaps administration brings back an RFD for your consideration with all the information, and brings it back, and you guys could have further discussion and debate on it, and go from there? Would that be an appropriate course of action?
I will get that motion made when we get done, the CAO report.
Cool.
Anything else on the CAO, CAO report? Keith?
How's our weed control doing on the CPR right away? I noticed on the way in, this one, there's, there's a great big bushy green plant with a big purple blossom on it. I don't know whether it's a weed or what that is, but there's sure a lot of it just, just outside Red Cliff. And I'm not sure exactly what that plant is, but it sure looked like it was very well established in that area, where the, that truck pullout thing is there. And so, just kinda curious. And I know there's some baby's breath going north, going north on the 884, so just curious how that was going.
So the ASB team is, has been reaching out to CP. Sometimes the communications with CP is not as prompt, and so that's a historical thing with all municipalities. So the ASB team and myself have got a plan sorted out. And if there is no response or no plan that they submit that's appropriate and effective, then a weed notice will be issued.
Dustin?
That's shoy milkweed, Keith. It's, it's shoy milkweed, and it's a real pain in the ass to kill. It's probably the slowest, most invasive, slow weed you've ever seen. It, it goes from a patch like this to a patch like this next year, and then the next year be a patch like this. And it just, it, it's hard to kill. I think milestone's the only thing that actually kills it. So, but yeah, it's hard to kill. Anyways, I guess for Terlen or Kim, 120, the culverts and stuff, how are we making out on that?
Through the chair. Yeah, so I don't know if we have any updated timelines, but we're still waiting for the environmental approval to proceed with construction. But we're still looking at it for 2022, for it to be all completed.
Shane?
Yeah, since you mentioned the 120. Kim, this for Public Works again. A notice we got, and it's, even when you pave, the cracks keep coming through. Are we looking at sealing them cracks up before, in the near future, some loister doesn't get into our new asphalt and that? We keep coming through no matter what, even on the highways, but it's an ongoing process. I was just wondering if we're looking into that?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair again. Yeah, so that, we haven't completed their, their CC yet, and so that's something that we'll identify with them. And we're still doing, we have our, we have a scheduled mobile crack sealer for those highway portions coming down before the fall. So we're planning on getting all that done, including the Eagle Butte, too, because that's, it's really bad on the Eagle Butte.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, would council perhaps like a letter sent to the Minister of Alberta Environment and Parks, asking for some quicker action on part of Alberta Environment to get us some approval, to get those, so we could start doing something with those culverts?
Yeah, I would think it's needed.
Because this has been going on for some time. So, another motion, if you're cool with it, when you come out, that direct administration to send a letter to the Minister of Alberta Environment and Parks, due to the lack of response and permissioning, I, that's probably not the best term, but for permissioning to, so we can get fixing those culverts. Leslie Ann will make it much more prettier wording.
Any other questions or comments on the, Blaine?
I guess this is, this for Kim, too. I noticed you did the oil service in Irvin, that went really well, looks good down there. Just wondering if you had a chance to deal with them drainage issues down there, too?
Thanks, through the chair. I'll, I have two parts. So we, when I said by the end of the summer for the 120, they're actually out there today. I just don't want to say it's gonna be done tomorrow, and it won't be, but they are out there today with the engineering consultant. So we are moving on the 120, creek diversion, I should say, clarify that. And then the, the issue in Irvin, we went and looked at that. And then we're just gonna be doing some locates, because we're gonna have to do some digging, and then that's something we'll proceed with. But by walking in there, we walked in there last week, and, and we'd be, at this time, we'd be doing a lot more damage, because it's soft everywhere, because it's, it's a low, flat drain. And so we'll have to wait for that to dry up before we can do any work. Yeah, but it is something that we've noted and, and will be done on this fall. Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else? Any questions on the CAO report? Shane, did you want to ask about the procedures on the potholes?
Sure. Oh, I'm getting so upset and so irritated. I go drive down that black and white lots to my place down south. When I, you see, throwing cold mix into a pothole, no tack oil. I'm not saying oil, I'm saying tack oil. You, the right oil for the right project. It's like when you shingle in a roof, you didn't, if you skip the nails, damn thing's gonna blow apart. If we skip the tack oil, the whole road, the pothole's gonna blow apart. And I'm tired, and really tired of seeing this. And I've been seeing it since I've been on council. I've been bringing it up. If nobody wants to do it properly, let's get somebody else, because it's, I'm tired of getting the complaints, I'm tired of seeing it, I'm tired of watching them throwing a bit of cold mix into a hole, using their tires to pack it, and then away they go to the next one. So guess what? Couple weeks later, they're blown out again. I'm tired of these make-work projects, and I'm frustrated. I have people that live on that road that are frustrated and see it all the time, and they complain, and, what are you guys, just make work projects all the time? Send somebody out, throw a bit in, come back two weeks later, sweep out the cold mix again, put in some more. It's getting frustrated, and I'm tired of the complaints. So I'd like administration to have a good procedure, that we use tack oil, not just oil, to tackle, the right oil for the right job, just like when you want to shingle a roof. So we don't have to keep going back and back and back, and that's why our costs keep going up on repairs of oil, because we're not doing it right. And I'm frustrated, and you can tell.
So just to, I'm gonna ask a question on that, it'll probably go to Kim. What is a procedure? Or do we have a procedure in place for this? Can you explain it to council so we understand what Mr. Hawke is upset about?
Yeah, so the procedure for, this procedure that they've used at Cypress County for, forever is, that's where they have all those dump trailers. So they do the best they can by removing any debris out of the hole. They'll pull in pot foam, sorry, cold mix, usually about an inch or two above the pothole line, and then tire pack it. And so that's something that they've done, and that's something that, that I've noticed, and that's why I brought in what I thought was the best repair option, which was the infrared heater. And so I've actually got procedures from other counties, and they do it very similarly. So I was just, is that something that I'm bringing up in our zone meeting? Because when I've, because I'm actually reviewing County of Warner's right now, but they all do it the same, just by putting cold mix in and, and...
So do they use tack oil?
No, not with cold mixed roads. They would on an asphalt surface, but on a cold mixed road, they would not. But that is something that I want to bring up as a, from all the public works in the area, and see what they would do, because I think this is, it's evident that the potholes aren't lasting. Or sorry, the repairs are not lasting, I should say, not, the potholes are lasting.
They're lasting too long.
Yeah, but the repairs are not lasting. And so I honestly, and I'm gonna, I honestly thought, when I did that presentation a year ago, that, now somebody's gonna hit me on the side, but I really don't like, I really like the idea, and nobody's done it in Alberta, is using this infrared heater on a cold mixed road. And so when I've called Husky, and I got the, the temperatures of the, of the infrared heater to see if it would work, Husky said, yeah, it should work, but then we could do our repairs year round. So if we got a pothole in the middle of winter, we'd be able to do that repair. And so that's, I, I agree with councillor Hawke, the way that we're doing it now, we need to be evaluated and, and brought back for a procedure back to council. But I, there is other ways.
So as of tomorrow, we are going to demo using tack oil on the black and white for sure, as of tomorrow. That will be, that will be in there, and to demo it and evaluate, that will occur as of tomorrow.
Okay. Shane?
So there is a big difference in between an oil road and a cold mixed road. The black and white is oiled. With that infrared heater in some of them spots, you'll burn down the whole highway, because there's so much oil in there, it won't stop the fire, it gets too hot. But, but will that, what happens? We're not talking pavement, we're not talking cold mix, because we don't have any cold mixed roads. We're using cold mixes patches. How will it work bonding with an oiled road and your cold mix?
Through the chair. Like I said, nobody's tried it in Alberta. So, or they, they have no recollection of anybody trying it. That's why I had to call Husky, that's why they went through the MSDS to make sure, like, I think, that's why when I requested the demo originally, I wanted them to try this. Because if this works, I don't know how we would repair those two potholes on, on a dust patch. Normally, we go out and repair the whole dust patch. If this works, this would save immensely, like we're thinking completely out of the box. Yeah, but that's all I wanted to do, is just to try it on those spots. I do think there's value for it in the hamlets and in the, the outdoor parks, the, all the different spaces that we have, the trails. We have two tennis courts alone right now, that I think that we could do rehab on, that are gonna cost more to rehab than this machine. So I do see value in there. And I'm just thinking of external value of doing this on oil. And so before I bring it back for a procedure, I'm gonna make sure that I have my i's dotted and my t's crossed, and, and I might have to get them to try it up in Edmonton, you know, if they can't bring down a demo on an oil road up there. So, but I'm bound and determined to make sure I can prove my theory, so.
Just tell them to really discount it, so that we can prove it for them.
Well, no, I, I really feel, I'd, them to bring it down before we bought it and see, on an oil road, because then I'm sold.
Yeah, there's...
If we can fix on that, with that machine on an oiled road, and it bonded everything, now without burning down the whole road, but, you know, once it gets hot. But if it works, then it has great value for us. Then I'm sold.
Yeah, so when I was talking to them, they said all you have to do is, is reduce the amount of time, and you can also control the temperature through a flow valve. So that's something that would take a little bit of finagling. But I actually have a friend right near their, sorry, a peer, that has lots of oil roads at Parkland County, so I'm gonna see, because that's where their shop is. So I'm gonna make sure I can come back with that answer for council, because I, I honestly think this is, it'll change the way people are doing road maintenance in Alberta. But that's, that's a little bold of saying that, but I, I truly believe that.
Who said we couldn't wear him down, eh?
Well, we got a lot of oil roads, and we got a lot of holes all the time.
Yeah. Blaine, did you have something?
All I was gonna say, if we did get into this, and we should get a kickback if the rest of the counties buy one of these things.
Well, through the chair again. From what I understand, Cypress County's always been a leader in, when it comes to new development, when it comes to oil development or road maintenance, we've always been the people that look to. So I'm assuming that would continue.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad we got, you got that off your chest, Shane? You're good?
Yes.
Is there any other comments on the CAO report? Since Shane feels better, we'll let him make that motion for the CAO report.
I make that motion.
Vote. Carrie? All right, or even councillors' report. So mine is in there, just gonna add to it, I just Just gonna add to it, I just got a phone call, actually this morning, they jumped on it. Dunmore Days is having their pancake breakfast on August twenty seventh and asked again if we would cook it and supply it for them. Dunmore, right here, August twenty seventh. They have it down as a breakfast at nine o'clock, but I think we all learnt last year that we need to be there at seven o'clock, so we're prepared for, that was a little bit of an oop. But if you guys are good with that, I'll give them the okay that we're, I do believe we had a budget set a year, away every year for these things for hamlets. Yeah, thousand dollars worth of, I think that's. Yeah, we pick it up before and let them pre-cook the sausage and everything. Okay, everybody's good with that and they'll go ahead with that. Other than that, the rest of my report was there and, we will start with Keith.
Uh, I actually don't have anything else to report.
Richard?
I was looking for your report again, but what page is it on? Forty-eight?
Forty-nine, forty-eight.
Okay. Couple of things, first of all, I would like to let council know that Travis did a great job of sending in all the library board paperwork that we needed to the Alberta government. The, as the board, we got behind on it a bit, we didn't have any meetings and Travis stepped in and, and looked after us, so, again, thank you and thank you, Terilyn, for having them do that. Tuesday, June twenty eighth, I went to Bow Island for a Verge Economic Development Meeting. That's where County Forty Mile, Towne and Bow Island and Cypress County meet, plus we have Mark Keller from the College. He tells us what's going on over there and what courses they've got and he's listening to see what, what the demand is, if we can, if we bring up anything that we need, we'd like to see some training on or we think there's something out there. So he keeps us in the loop. And then on Wednesday, June twenty ninth, I went to the equipment demo and, yeah, well, as you can tell, I was impressed. I'm ready to jump on that thing right now and get it and let's get at it, but I, I just see where, with that oiling on, on those roads, we just experiment. I, I think even whatever they do up there, there's no guarantees that their road's the same as ours anyway. So let's just get the darn thing, get it down here and start experimenting and do, experiment in Shane's area and then if it's a pothole, it doesn't matter as much, but, yeah, no, just kidding. I drove over to the Dunmore Park and, yeah, the excavation for that new, um, that new, I'm not gonna call it a building, but the project, the one at the skating rink. They, they had the pads done, I know they're working on the piers this week, I'd imagine everything will be done by the end of the week, so, um, that is really progressing great, it's good. Again, Industrial Backos donated all the digging and backfilling, so that's like a seven thousand dollar touch. So that was huge, that really helped that project along. Had some phone calls from some neighbors, a couple of nasty emails that I can't repeat because the language was pretty strong, but, one of them had to do with a, um, it's not a mud bug, it's a tractor pole over there, I think, anyway. So a couple of the neighbors are upset with the noise. I tried to pass the blame on to the planning commission because I wasn't around, but I didn't really throw them under the bus, but I might have a little, you know. Anyway, just for down the road, I don't know how, if we're getting other complaints, but got that one. Lowering the speed limit on Township one twenty-two, I had brought that back about a year ago and then Kim's department did do a vehicle count. We had two hundred and one vehicles a day because there's an increased traffic with the greenhouses and, I would like to bring that back up again very soon, that we can look at it. At the time, um, I think it was brought up that, well, we need to look at a bunch of other roads. Well, yeah, fine, we do, but this one is my priority. So, um, Terilyn, I will send you another email on it and perhaps we can do it. We'd like to lower it just for that one short section from the number three highway to the sixty-three. That's where the, the bulk of the traffic is, everybody turns off after that, so, um. Yes, and, um, the school bus stops on that road for one family right now. I imagine there'll be another one down the road here, but, um, could we get a school bus sign put up there? Because some of the people that are working at the greenhouse don't understand how school buses work. When they put their signs out, they still kind of drive around them, but if we had some kind of warning sign, perhaps we could do that. And then, um, also, um, I have a road, Range Road seventy-one that Public Works is working on continuously and I continuously get emails and phone calls about it. It's this that road that has all that high volume on it because of that other greenhouse that's on the seventy-one, plus the fact that Big Marble uses it to haul their waste material. I did a road tour on that, um, on Sunday, I was curious and, yeah, it's kind of crappy, but, Kim had told me they were crushing down at the Lee pit and it's really good gravel. So then I drove down there and the guys were crushing and, yeah, they've got a nice conveyor system going, Shane, that looks pretty good. Then I went over and I drove down Range Road sixty-five, which is north of the Wholesome Road. That road goes right out to the edge of the river hills. There's people that are camping out there and kind of causing the other two neighbors grief. Apparently that site has been pinned on Google and it's pinned as free camping. So there's numerous people on a regular basis that use that. The last people that were out, were from Quebec, so it's, it's, and I talked to the neighbors and it's used on a regular basis through the summer. So this is actually on Redcliffe land where they're parked, but they have to go down our road to get there, so. Yes. Okay, but also the residents on that road would like to have a no overnight camping sign put on our sign. It's, there's a Range Road sixty-five and Township Run one thirty sign there, a post there that we could just put no overnight camping on there. That would really, really help too, right? It'll be town land that they're on, but we could put it on our property that says, don't go down there, right? Yeah, yeah. It's public land, apparently it's public land, eh? It's the town of Redcliffs land. Oh, I see. Looks like they're camping on, I don't know where the, where does, yeah, let's just do it. Where does the road allowance end, at the river, at the bank or whatever, right? So. Never ends, yeah, okay. Because right, yeah, right across is the Redcliff pump house and then that road goes up the other side, but. I'll send you a picture of that, where it would work, okay? But those people are just concerned because there's some partying going on and there's been a couple that have been using the happy tobacco and kind of dancing around out there and, so, anyway. It wasn't a dull day. Yeah. Yeah, um, other than that, I think things are going pretty darn good, so.
All right. Well, Richard took the time for everybody, but Shane, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, I do. I, uh, not many meetings, but I had a, on the twenty-ninth, why I couldn't go to the, the demonstration, we had the pipeline, we moved our bulls out by Suffield there and I was bombarded with complaints from all the residents in my area. All the way from our graders just going down the road grading and it being washboard right away. So I went and drove it and yes, it was an embarrassment to, I don't know what's going on, but it was very washboardy and they had just finished playing it. Some complaints about we need gravel here and there and I said, yes, the grader guys report back to our Public Works. They're over in the seven persons area, they'll be looking at it. I'll be talking later on about old TransCanada Highway, that was brought up. And then, uh, I got roped, roped into doing the judging for the Mini Berry's chili cook-off. I said, it's not really my area, I said, but they said that old guy that got voted in up at Elkwater, they didn't know if the chili would be good for his heart and he's old, so. I said, okay, I would do it and it was quite interesting, they had about nine teams and that. And it was quite interesting, working with down in Mini Berry's there with residents and, yeah, that was it.
Dustin?
Uh, so on the twenty-second, I did a subdivision appeal board hearing. The thirtieth, we had an I C F meeting in Redcliff. And then, yeah, a couple odd complaints over the course of a couple of weeks too. And one actually was our gravel trucks driving to fast pass residences and I got a hold of Andrew and apparently he corrected it, so thank you to him for that. And another one I got too was with the washboard and the grading too, about them going too fast and using their blades to skid gravel around and not actually using to grade the road. And I said, I tend to agree and I'll bring it up, so I brought it up. Another one too, talk about the Pococky Lake Road, which is Range Road seventy-four. That road has little to no crown to it and every time we've been getting a rainstorm, it, it takes in, it pools water in the middle. They put gravel on it and they built the center up, but we know that won't last very long as soon as that gravel gets pounded out. Is there anything we can look at to take and re-slope that road, whether it's with that reclaimer or something to try and pull that crown up so it doesn't hold water so bad?
Through the chair, I'll, we'll take a look at it and then put it back in our next report.
That's it? Blaine?
Well, all I can say is I'm glad I live east of town because there seems like a lot of whining going on on the west side of the town. Yeah, pretty quiet in my area last couple of weeks, but I did attend a U C P fundraiser golf tournament thing. Keith had invited me too. One of the planning guys or one of the campaign planning group there wanted to have Travis Days come down during Stampede Week, maybe have a breakfast in the urban area, they were wondering if we'd be interested in meeting with them for an hour either before or after. So when I, when I find out more details, I'll get back to Dan, Terilyn, but do you guys know what's going on? Other than that, that's all I have.
Lloyd?
Well, like Shane and Richard, very busy. Out there, I, uh, I've received, got five phone calls on a long weekend about the golf course road. So all from cabin owners, nobody, no ranchers yet. But I've got three complaints from ranchers about weeds and some of the roads and want to give my thanks to Lesley Ann for helping me out. It solved me about three different problems when she gave me some information, which was good. So the thing is, I attended the planning commission meeting, the landfill and that demonstration that Kim invited us to, I thought was really good. And finished up our school, our last meeting, thanks to Jeffrey, he graduated us all. So it was good. Other than numerous calls and weed complaints, it's been quiet.
Cheryl?
Really, the only thing that I did was the E O E P course and I went on holidays. I did get some complaints about the culvert going in, but I think you're finished that on the one sixty. So I kind of explained that, you know, they were just saying, well, it doesn't have to be done. And I said, well, you know, told them about the rotation and fixing them as they, before they're wrecked and they were okay with it and it's all, it's done now. Oh, and then I got an email from Short Grass about a letter that was written. And if there's any questions on that, I'll tell you later, that's about it.
Okay, any questions on the reports? Oh, Kim?
Through the chair, I'll just follow up about the weed spraying because it seemed like that was a comment. So we're doing our second round, we're very impressed with the first round. Um, we'll be doing our second round in the middle of July for the weed spraying, so that's, just so when you get those calls then, and it takes them, I think it took them nine or ten days to do the whole county last time because they came out with four trucks. So just, just for F Y I.
Okay.
Richard? There was a fellow, Lisa, it was, who was in the office this morning, that was that, was that Harlow Auto? Yeah, I had met, uh, he just was here for something else and then he was talking about weeds in the, on, along the TransCanada Highway? Oh, Gerald, yeah, okay, yeah. And I didn't have an answer for him, like, I thought we sprayed and then charged the Alberta government, is, can you just, for everybody else, yeah?
Yeah, that's true. Okay, uh, Keith is making a motion to accept the reports. Vote. Carried? All right, I'm gonna do, I know Glenn's here, so I've got three quick things to do here, so at least it doesn't have to stay around, so. First though, I gotta get a motion for that R F D for the, what's? Infrared.
For the next, for an upcoming meeting, the, the infrared paver, yep.
Paver, that's, Shane's making that motion. Everybody's good with it, vote. And then for, I need a motion for parks. Dustin's doing that, sorry. To send the letter for parks for the one twenty culverts. Vote. Carried? And then we will do ten point one, Terilyn.
Do you also too for the bus signs on one twenty-two?
Oh, I forgot those ones.
Bus signs, bus signs on one twenty-two? And then, and then the speed on one twenty-two and bring that back to the next meeting as per the request of Deputy Revoester.
Okay, so the motion is to put the bus sign up and to bring back information on dropping the speed down. Just one motion.
We can put.
Vote. Carried? Okay, now we'll do ten point one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, policy for A S B ten, weed control and herbicide. The council moved the, uh, to accept policy A S B ten, the weed control and herbicide application with amendments as presented. On page forty-nine is the R F D and on page fifty-two is the policy. The changes are in red and the struck out items have a line through it. Is there any questions?
Okay, Blaine's making that motion. Is there any questions on it? Not seeing any. Vote. Carried? All right, we will take a five-minute break and then we can get to our delegation. See you, Lisa, got you out of here.
Let me like last night, I couldn't sleep, so I was watching Unforgiven and that young kid shoots that guy in the shit house. That's what my mind's been.
Yeah, the last week, the week for complaining, man, I had to bombarded. Everybody out there gave it to me.
I had, I only had the one, the week before the other meeting even, about doing the bull trail. And no sooner, I said, I'll, we have a meeting, I'll bring it up and then I, on the way to town, I seen they were doing it. And no sooner, I said, I'll, we have a meeting, I'll bring it up, and then I, on the way to town, I seen they were doing it. So, it was like, I looked like the hero, because I didn't even do anything, right, because it was already, I knew it was in the books, and I told them that. So, that was done, and I haven't had a frickin' phone call or an email. Not, nothing.
You know, it goes in waves.
I, yeah.
Because I'll go for months and not have nothing, and all of a sudden, it's just like bam, but the problem.
Well, I think our area, like, is really, is generally farmers and ranchers, and everybody is so frickin' happy, they don't give a shit about nothing, but. Oh, yeah.
I go by a grader where, and I said, uh, like, when we were doing, let's say, based on, you know, the, the night art grader operator, they put their blade down and a ripper down, in case it turns off. So, I wouldn't create a flat spot, so then they would affect their blade in twenty-five years.
Yeah, it's like your tractor, if you put too much air in there, you're bouncing all the way from one yard to the other one. So, you guys be interested in going to this breakfast or meeting with Travis Days? Now, they're thinking of doing it at Urban, like, on the Friday of, uh, Stampede or something? Well, he was gonna, Doug Jones seems to be like his campaign manager or whatever, and, actually, he's a really good guy, since, like, he knows Nate really good, and I brought, I, still brought, I know it's been raining and everything, but they're not that wet up there, so I, so I brought them in tension to make sure that, that's still on the, still on the table for, you know, the deferrals and, oh, yeah, I mean, you gotta keep it on the table, though, you gotta keep thinking about it, in case things change next year or whatever. No, I don't want your frickin' chair, I'm getting in your chair.
But why not?
You didn't bring her snacks out today?
He said he won't be too long.
Really? I was looking forward to getting one.
Uh, I mean, we didn't want to be too high, I mean, like, what?
I'm sure, I'm sure you, you watched that online. I get one.
Here the greatest. Well, I filled out every, or they said they filled it out, I just had to sign it.
Yeah, now you gotta be good.
Now I gotta protect. I think you should still have two wheels, so I should be able to just write it down.
Everybody's here?
Nope. Go down.
Who am I missing? No, I don't. It's cool. Oh, you're a good woman.
How the hell are these things supposed to bolt eventually on here somewhere, probably?
I don't know. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. All right, we have Mr. Mott's here today, so I will give the floor over to him.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, uh, Reeve Hamilton, uh, great to be with you again today, I want to be very focused, because it's summertime, and, um, your Reeve has made it very clear that he needs to be out of here by noon, along with you guys, so. And I'm gonna be less than twenty minutes, depending on your questions. Uh, just as a way of background, as you know, every ten years, when a census is done by legislation and constitution, Canada is required to do a redistribution of population, um, for elected officials. Canada's population census was done in twenty twenty, I believe, so twenty twenty-one it was done. So, now, the commission, until next election, is going around across the country, and each province has their own commission to look at redistribution. Alberta's population increased, uh, and as such, we jumped from, uh, three point six million to four point two between twenty eleven and twenty twenty-one. And as such, we will be, uh, seeing three additional seats distributed around the province. Now, the commission has the responsibility, uh, to try and have each of our electoral, electoral districts at around a hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, constituents per, uh, riding. Some, uh, are substantially higher than that, in fact, some in Alberta currently are around two hundred plus, uh, some of the largest population ones in the country. So, most of the redistribution will occur, uh, in and around some of the major centers, and, but that has a trickle effect and a ripple effect out to other ridings. Um, so, the commission has put out their, their findings so far, and, uh, the reason I'm coming to you today is I, I don't think it's appropriate, and the commission historically apparently has frowned upon elected officials being MPs weighing in on electoral boundaries. And, and the reason for that is, um, I think in some circumstances, it can be construed that there's something personally to gain. If you lose an area that's strong, liberal, NDP, conservative, depending on the riding in the country, if you lose that strong area and you're riding, um, you know, and it's redistributed, then, you know, you're gonna complain, because you want to keep it, because you want to keep your seat. So, I have chosen, uh, and many other MPs do the same thing, uh, to not, uh, weigh in, I, I will not be presenting to the commission. But other Canadians, every Canadian has an opportunity, and Medicine Hat will have a commission hearing on September nine, and I'll give you those details here in a, in a few minutes. Um, my encouragement to you would be, is if, once you're done the presentation today, and we answer your questions, and you see what's being proposed, that, um, as a council, you may find it necessary to make a written submission through your admin, uh, to the commission, um, and, and we'll go through some of the reasons where I think, uh, the boundaries for, for this area, for Cypress County, should remain as is. Leslie Ann, if you could, if you could put up, so this is the current boundary right there, and you'll see that it goes right up to the river, uh, and north and across, can you pull it down, yeah, so, so it goes right to the very, very peak, following the South Saskatchewan there, on the way out into Saskatchewan, takes in, uh, Hilda, uh, Shuler, and then all the way across, um, to, uh, west of Jenner, and then back down and goes in between Grassy Lake and, and Burdette. So, if you just put up, that's, that's the, that's the current, the proposal now, as it affects us and this particular region, you'll see the proposal to go across one fifty, not all the way north to the river, it'll kind of come across on Range Road one fifty, cut off part of, um, uh, Cypress County, come out at Suffield, exclude, um, everything north of, uh, Ralston, including the block, and the area west where it used to see, you see the line there, everything west there that used to be Cypress County, or is Cypress County. It, it takes that all out, now, I've had staff, Leslie Ann and staff and others, do some, uh, some calculations for me. Uh, as best as can be determined within, you know, a few people, that area that they're talking about is about eight hundred and forty-five to eight hundred and fifty people, that's it, in Cypress County. My riding, as it's being proposed, I have with a current population of twenty twenty-one, is about a hundred and seventeen thousand in it, which is very doable. Adding eight hundred and fifty people to that riding would have zero impact on my capacity to represent those constituents. My concern with the split like that is, uh, Martin Shields riding, if you just pull it down just a little bit further, um, and then do the, I know, I guess we'd have to go up, um, uh, don't worry about it, Leslie Ann. I, I, if you look at Bow River, uh, uh, yeah, Bow River. Uh, right there, so you look at Bow River, that's what's being proposed now from what it used to be. So, um, we're talking from Innisfail to Shuler. Uh, it makes no sense, in order to, in order to, for Martin's the MP there now, in order for Martin to get to anywhere on the other side of the rivers, you know, and, and, you know, we, we tell electoral, uh, commissions, uh, rivers are dividers, roads are connectors. So, the South Saskatchewan River divides, the only places you can cross is north of Jenner, or at Medicine Hat, or come down from the south. So, for Martin to get there, he'd have to go, uh, you know, north of Jenner, cross the river, and then take, take the country roads across to get back down, cross again, or come into Medicine Hat and back up. The commerce of Hilda, uh, Shuler, Ralston, the base, everything is Medicine Hat, it makes no economic sense that those people would be divided to have a separate MP looking after their issues, uh, and, and you guys would have a separate MP to look at issues to the north of one fifty, it makes no sense. So, what I'm asking you to consider is if you would, um, if you would, and I'll leave some instructions here with your staff, uh, the commission has, uh, a process that they want people to go through to make it known what your, what your wishes are with respect to, uh, having the status quo, at least for Cypress County. And I think from an economic perspective, from, you know, the population increase won't impact the riding such that it will make it untenable, uh, to be able to represent those extra eight hundred, uh, plus people, and, uh, you know, the, the dividing line for, for the bordering MP, uh, to do it would be, would be problematic. Now, I know that, uh, Martin Shields and, um, Blake Richards, who is, uh, from the Airdrie area, their, their writings intersect. They will be making a present, presentation to the commission, and they will cover this area off a little bit, but I think it would matter a lot if, you know, if Cypress County could say, here's our concerns, he, we would ask you to leave Cypress County in the way that it is for the following reasons, and you're gonna have more than I do. As you go west on my riding now, you'll see that, that little jaunt right there where Leslie Ann has the cursor, that's Tabor County. Um, they are dividing, like, I will take now the town of Tabor and the south part of Tabor County, and then the north part, anything over the, uh, north of the Old Man, will be part of Bow River. Up there, so, uh, and then on the west side, I, I lose the Blood Reserve, uh, but keep, uh, where that line is, right underneath by Carstens, right at the very bottom left there, Leslie Ann, right there, that straight line, that's the bottom part of the reserve, and then, um, if you go up on the other side of the reserve along the Bellee River, that's actually still part of Carstens County, but it's always been in the foothills riding, and it doesn't, and I deal with stuff from constituents there a lot, uh, John Barlow does a little bit, and anything to do with the, uh, with the MD, uh, Carstens County, I deal with them, uh, most, almost exclusively on, on those issues. But, and it's such a small area, it really doesn't, uh, doesn't matter a lot. Um, and I'm gonna be disappointed that if this stays, that I'll lose the Blood Reserve, I've created some great friendships there, and have been doing some good work to try and, you know, add value to the lives of the people there, but, um, you know, there has to be, you know, a dividing line. They, they, that's about fifteen thousand people they, they have in that population base, so, uh, that has to go to the foothills riding, because, um, part of, uh, Cochrane and Springbank area then would be lost to more, from, from Barlow's riding, so then that would be the cutoff. So, that's, that's basically it, the, uh, like I said, the commission, the commission has, um, the commission has a, a, uh, some deadlines, uh, the riding will be seventeen thousand four forty-seven, based on twenty twenty-one census with their proposal. You add eight fifty of that, and we're at what, eighteen-three, you know, eighteen, eighteen-four, somewhere's in that range. Now, uh, they, they have, um, there's some, some requirements, and Leslie Ann on that site, and others on that redistribution dot C A, or redistrib- redistribution twenty twenty-two, there's some, um, some guidelines on how to, how to do a presentation to the commission, and the notice of public hearings, Medicine Hat will be at the Best Western Premier on Prowl Silver Drive, uh, seven PM, Friday, September the ninth. Now, that's the public hearing to be in person, they require, uh, those who, oh, those who, um, and there's all rules around public, uh, public hearings, you have to have a submission to them, um, and I don't remember the date, and I apologize for that. It's sometime coming up relatively soon, I think it might be, um, by the end of this, before the end of this month. So, um, that's, uh, that's what I am proposing, um, to, to you guys to consider. Um, and I thank the staff for the work you've done to get me those numbers on the eight hundred and fifty people. And, um, it is, I'll certainly entertain any questions, and I'll leave it to, uh, like I said, I'll leave it to you, I know Martin and, and will be talking to the commission directly about that area and others of his, he's got other areas that he wants to touch on. Um, but he'll be talking about Cypress County and the difficulty that'll, would be for him, uh, but I figured that would be best to come through you on that process. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you, Glenn, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mott's? I see what you're, I see what you're coming from there, so it make, doesn't make sense to have him go all the way up and come back down, so, Richard?
Yeah, so I, I look at it from two directions, with Martin, yeah, that's, he's burning up a whole day to go see a very small population. And the other, I think the way we have to come at it is the fact that our population, our people, their representative lives a long ways away, and it doesn't make sense when they can drive thirty mile, forty miles into town in Medicine Hat to see our rep, in this case, you, versus all the way across the country, yeah, so, I think that's the one we have to push, not that it's easier for that. For you, no, it's not about you, but it's, it's those people, yeah, they.
The focus has to be on the constituents, and, and their economic, and even the, the viability of your county. You know, you have business to deal with, uh, with, you know, through your representatives as well, having them split doesn't serve it as well.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't make sense, for sure.
Dustin, did you have something? Anybody else have any questions? Keith? Keith?
I'm sure to understand where you're coming from, Glenn. I just look at Jenner and I go like, what do we have in common with Innisfail? You know, you've got such a variety of geography and interests and weather patterns and, you know, that's just, you know, Brooks is just as close to talk to my MP as Medicine Hat, that's okay for us. But people in Hilda and Shuler and Berstall and that, I can see where that really puts them at a disadvantage.
And Keith, if you look at, you know, the old one, dividing line was basically special areas number two in Cypress County. That was a divider.
That's already a natural divider that's already there, so.
Michelle?
As someone who lives in Shuler, I don't like this at all. I think it's, you know, there's not very many of us out there. And right now, I know where you are, I know that I can find you, and you know the area. For somebody from Innisfail or up there is not going to have any clue. And, you know, I've been working hard to make this not the forgotten corner of the world. If they do that, I think we're just going to get lost out there.
Good point. And the thing is, I mean, right now, the MP for Bow River is Martin Shields and he lives in Brooks. But that doesn't necessarily have to be the next time around. If Martin chooses not to run, I mean, if you look, they could have, they could have someone in the, if you go back to Bow River, the new, in the new one, they could have someone from Killam. You know, Troschu or Three Hills be the MP, right? And then, you know, you're talking two and a half hours to get down there. I guess the people in Carstens feel the same way. For me, it's two and a half hours for me to get to them. But, you know, there's, there's. Yeah, no, good point. And I think those are all issues that you can take to the commission if you, as a council, decide that's what you want to do.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. We will discuss this in our meeting today and see what motion comes out of it.
All right, thanks very much. And for those who wanting this, this is a document you're looking for. It's online, redistribution.ca, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.ca. And it's got the proposal of the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for the province of Alberta. And in that document, it's about sixty pages long, some of it has to do with Edmonton Calgary. But the rules for engaging the commission and timelines are all listed in it. All right? Thank you very much for your time. Has Trudeau come out of hiding yet? Only when he travels globally. Without a mask.
Should have sent him to Chicago.
Yeah. All right, thanks very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Glenn. You have a good day.
Yeah, you guys too.
We're not on camera, so I'm allowed to say things like that. Have a good day. All right, before I get to ten point two, do we want to make a motion to send a letter in and get involved with this?
Michelle?
And also to, one of the questions that more than likely will be asked, if we need to, Cypress County, you need to identify if you wish to participate in the public hearing. So I think that would be wise to, that someone is a spokesperson and presents what the letter is. So I would put that in your submission as well right off the get-go, so they understand that someone from Cypress County will be presenting at the public hearing.
I will do that.
Have to be me, I guess. Probably both of us, she'll be filling in the blanks and I miss. Okay, Michelle's making that motion. Any questions or comments on it? Vote. Carrie? All right, we're on the ten point two, Terilyn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page sixty is the naming of Suffield Park and purchase of memorial benches. There's three recommended motions. That council names the park adjacent to the community hall in Suffield as the Elf Belier Community Park. Two, that council direct administration of purchase of park sign and a park bench at a cost of not exceeding fifty-five hundred, funded from council other. And three, that council purchases two memorial benches for Darcy and Elf to be placed at the entrance of the county administration building at a cost not exceeding twenty-three hundred dollars. On page sixty, there is the RFD and backup information. Deputy Reeve Oster has looked into different signs as well, I believe. And it was handed out, it's just, it's a handout for you guys. And I will leave it to you, Reeve, Dan.
Thank you, Terilyn. Go ahead, Richard. Actually, I like that.
Dan, I'd speak on item, on the second motion if Dustin wants to speak on the first motion.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Dustin, you want to take the first one then?
Yeah, so I'll move recommendation number one to name the park adjacent to the community hall in Suffield Elf Belier Community Park. I think he put a lot of effort into that, and it is a very fitting tribute to him to take and name that after him.
Is that, is that more appropriate than the Elf Belier Memorial Park? Or is it just, what's the difference? Like memorial speaks more to his memory, but do you want to keep it more community orientated?
Richard?
I think at this time, it would be easier on the family if we didn't go with memorial. Just went with community because of this issue, what's going on will be a couple more years yet. And it would be easier on the family not to do memorial.
I agree with Richard on that. And just because Elf was so community minded, everything he did was for his community. So I think saying community in there versus memorial is a good idea, plus what Richard said.
I'm just speaking with Councillor Curpie White. He agrees with both Richard and Michelle for the naming.
Any other comments? Okay, vote. That's carried. The second motion?
Dan, I'd make that. I'd like to make that motion, but I'm going to ask, suggest an amendment just for another, a little bit more money, probably go from fifty-five hundred to say sixty-one hundred dollars. And the reason is that I did a little bit of research on what would be a good sign to put up. We've got, there's, I think there's some pictures and probably, they're not pulling up. But anyway, you've got that that was handed out. I sat down, I met with a local company that does these, these signs out of concrete. And then the lettering has got a coating on it. Anyway, it's a long-term thing. I thought about steel, but a steel sign, you can't read it unless you're right in front of it. It's got to be just perfect to where you are. And then also, I thought about what we do for Cypress County with our signs, but they were out too. Eventually, they needed to be replaced. So I met with these people, she came up with some ideas. I got to tell you, the one I like the best is the one that's got Cypress County emblem on it. And then it says Elf Belier Community Park. That's the one I like the best. So that is just under five thousand dollars. And I'd still like to have a bench also that would go there because that park has some stuff in the playground for the little kids to sit on, but there's not much for the adults. And just another way of recognizing Elf. So my motion would be for to purchase the park sign. If everybody is kind of in favor of it, I would go with this one. And then also, we put a park bench in, but I would need sixty-one hundred dollars.
Well, I think everybody's page here is on this. This one that you held up. Shane?
I want to throw a little twist to it. Kim? Ken? In our gravel pits, I like, you know, Elf was different. He, you know, he brought so much to the table. You know, even when you're golfing with him, looking for golf balls all over. That rock, like there's no two boulders are the same. If in one of our gravel pits, if we had, you know, a big flat rock, you know, that come out of the county, put it there. You know, so it'd be this. This one. With the top, I mean, it's, I don't know, it's just, I like them both, but just, you know, with the rock. You know, if we, I don't know if there is any, if there's any around them pits or not, but I think maybe down at the lead, there's some big ones.
Mr. Chairman, we could look and see if we have an appropriate big rock aggregate that would fit this. And if not, what we could do is go, if you guys are cool with that, then go with the other.
So Shane's asking me what I think. I've looked at big rocks before, I'd seen a few where you then get a stencil cut out and then they sandblast the name in there and, or the, yeah, whatever you want on there. And I think it's going to be difficult to find a flat enough faced rock that can have the Cypress County symbol on, which I think is important. Plus, I want, I would like to see big enough lettering. So you're talking a really huge rock, you got to use a crane to put it in and out. And this is such a nice, simple thing. You pour a concrete pad, you set it on there and we're done. So it's a great, it's a good idea, Shane, but I just, I like this one better.
Michelle?
I actually agree with Shane. I like the rock better than the other one. But, you know, if there's something that we have in a pit somewhere, I think that's a great idea. But I wouldn't be opposed to the other one either. I just happen to like this one.
No.
I I've always liked the rock idea, but but I like how the first one that everybody was picking is so much cleaner and neater. You don't have flowers around it to make it look that specific.
To draw attention to it.
To draw attention to it. You just, the first one to me is going to be tidy all year round and taken care of all year round.
I like the fact that it keeps consistency too with like what we have for the county sign out front here. Because it's a very kind of similar setup, so that consistency is good to keep with too. Because if we do them in other places, then we can keep that same consistency.
No matter what you choose, Elf would be very appreciative to being recognized. He would be very, very appreciative.
And of course, his daughters, yeah, they'll be overwhelmed, there's no doubt about it.
So your motion is for the first one then?
Yeah.
I think everybody likes that one, right? It's just simple, it's great, and you can see it as you're driving by on the road and stuff. So it would be for the first one. Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Vote. Motion is for the first one. What was the third motion on this?
I'll make it.
All right. Shane?
I'll make motion number three, but what do you guys think of two memorial benches? When we say memorial for out front, that we have it for all our past councillors, you know, that have passed away, that it becomes a real memorial bench out front of the office here. You know, with Darcy's and Elf's names on there too, but just make it for everybody. Because I know we're naming the park after Elfie there in Suffield. There has been some discussion behind the scenes of that, once that campground is done in Irvin, that we can name that after Darcy. Because he liked camping enough. So it's just, I don't know, something that we make it real memorial bench for all the past councillors out front of the county office. Make everybody else's opinion.
Well, I'll give you guys the idea behind it and then you guys can all go from there. The idea on the two benches was because those two gentlemen were on council at the time of the passing. There's lots of other gentlemen and ladies up there that are gone at this point in time, but that was after being, they weren't.
Dan, I feel, but that's why we're naming the park and maybe a campground after them ones that were sitting when they passed away. But if we're talking memorial benches in front of the county office, I just, I think it'd be nice to include all past councillors that passed away.
Yeah, that's. I didn't realize there is another one. Richard?
I'm just wondering, Shane, if you'd clarify it. So what would you, like, there'll be an indentation? You can order these benches that have the indentation ready for the sign. I've put on some signs on the benches that don't, and it works okay, but it's better to have that indentation. So what are you asking, or what are you looking for on that sign? Like, what would you put on there? I guess we, because we might as well discuss that right now, right?
Dustin, you have an idea?
So I actually seen this, and I believe it's in the town of Bull Island, they have it in their park. They actually have a concrete bench. And they take and they, just like a headstone, for example, how you can take and you can add on to it and add more stuff in after. They have, sorry, but they have a stone bench where they take and they have the engravings. And as, and I can't remember what exactly it was for, and I think it might be the Lions Club. But they add the engravings on to it as they go. And their plan, I think, was, is once out, once full, there's that another bench. So, well, I got it too, I agree with Shane, I like the idea that. I love the fact that we're actually naming things after these gentlemen who have passed in their communities that they belong to. I think that's more appropriate for memorials to say. Where in front of the county office, I think, you know, at some point, everybody on these walls is going to have their name on that bench. And I think that's very appropriate, and I think it would look better in that regard.
Well, I'm never dying, so my name's not going up there.
Oh, I also have to bring up what Shane said earlier too, just because it's funny. So Shane said, if we do it this way, when he eventually does pass on, we can put his name on the seat because of the shit disturber he is.
Yeah, right in the middle.
One other suggestion too is to have, like you guys said, the two benches out front. But maybe something in the rock area as the memorial, maybe that would be a good compromise with the big rock because there's a nice space there. And then have the plaque on it that we can keep adding to it over time. I could get some ideas.
The out front needs some love, and we're working on that currently, fixing the rock up and the trees and as well.
I actually like that idea the best. Yeah, keep adding to it. The wall you don't want to get on.
Nobody would be sitting on it. And nobody will be sitting on it Shane.
Maybe shooting at you.
Con- concrete benches are also damn cold, so, uh, we just for sure want to go with the metal one and, uh, actually the water dries off it faster, et cetera, so.
I've thinking that would improve the meter or all toward, or we have a stone bench.
Keith, you had something?
Where, where had you thought of putting the benches?
We know, you know, where's the, um, where the garbage can is, or kind of like a, like this? Kind of like a little city area there.
Okay, so number three, we got a yes on, but we're undecided how we want to do it. Do we want to do the two benches and then do kind of a memorial wall with the rock? Is that the? Let the staff bring back an idea on that? Did I make anybody, ask anybody to make that motion? Shane, okay.
As amended.
As amended? You got it? Vote? Carried. Oh, we should have put that one on the last of the agenda. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Should have done this first. Ten point three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ten point three, salvage oil surfacing from Old Transcanada Highway and mud, mud bogging concerns. Um, the recommended motion is that council directs administration accordingly. On page sixty-four is, uh, the, begins the RFD, it goes sixty-four and sixty-five. I leave it to council.
Shane, you want to discuss?
Okay, the first, there is, and I know Ken would probably agree with me, that oil that's on top of that, on that road in front of Ronco and White Fox, and, uh, there would do more good on top of a road than trying to work it into a subgrade. So I want, like, staff to, the other parts of the Old Transcanada Highway needs reshaping and is really wide, where it's gravel. So I would like to see staff redo the gravel sections of bringing up the slopes, reshape the road, getting the crown back so the water does not sit all in the middle of the road. And then mill off the oil and be organized so you can spread it on that gravel piece right away, so we don't double handle. And then with the access, because there's more there than we'll need, then the access we could, uh, sit down in the landfill area there, just for storage and use it whenever we can then, or when we need it and that. Because, uh, one of the guys that will be on that project for Acon, I was talking to him the other night on other stuff, and then he said, I'll see you at the end of July, because that's when they're coming in. So I think we have time to organize ourselves, so we don't double handle. That's what I'm getting away from. Double handling, when we're in the private sector, costs money. And that we'd be organized, that road's ready, mill it up and, and then I know my good guys over at Public Works had told me that we'll be on the Old Transcanada Highway reshaping that in June. We haven't showed up yet. So now we're into July. I've been telling the people that use it, ratepayers there, they act, we're coming for a couple of years now. And it's not done, and this last time, boy, it got out of hand. And I got one really irate, ratepayer there that used it and got to run around when he phoned certain detachments about, uh, enforcing, getting them off. And he said, next time I may come out with a gun and then we'll see what enforcement's like. It's getting really bad, really bad. And I'm wondering from Public Works, when a concrete timeline that we're going to finally get to it? Because, um, it's becoming a real problem and it's a hazard. We're gonna end up in a lawsuit if there's an accidents and that in there, because this wide open mud bogging. You got that right.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I address, address enforcement? So I talked to the gentleman and, uh, so, and shared with him too, if he has concerns to, to call me. Spoke with our bylaw and community peace officer and, uh, the RCMP have been, uh, have, we've had discussions with them and they are going to be diligent, uh, particularly when it rains, to be out in that neck of the woods, uh, because it's going to be a habit now, more than likely even after it's reshaped and everything, they're going to try their level best to wreck it again. It's just humans have those bad habits. So Jeffrey and his team are, uh, addressing that on the enforcement side and, uh, Kim has, or Director of Public Works has some, uh, further information on this.
Through the chair. I think I might get my name on that bench seat. I'll be right next to you Shane. Yeah, so that was something that we were planning on doing, but with the amount of rain we've had this year in that low spot, because it's undeveloped trail, it's no drainage there. It has been really up, we bring it up every time we have our, our meeting, but it's just been with the weather. It's, it's on top of our list and, um, we will get it done. And I want to get it done before we do in July, before we get the other road done, because I think that's important. So the concrete time, I want to get it done before we're starting the old TC. So that's, gives me.
Well, weather permitting.
It will get, weather permitting, it will get done, um, before that date. So we got three weeks.
That's the oil part.
We're talking about that low lot, that low spot north of Bull.
Okay.
Yep.
Then what about?
Well, you only get one thing.
Now is this, where are you, are you done to plan to try to get the old Transcanada Highway in between, uh, going to Redcliffe there reshaped and ready for that oil, so we don't have to double handle?
If council approves that, I will.
I want to see which councillor's done to disagree with me on that one.
All of us? You already got a paved road going in, that's enough.
Paved road, where?
Front of there.
Where?
The Old Transcanada is getting pavement, isn't it?
Not paved yet.
It's going in. Take your.
But we got to get that oil off.
Take your pick. Which one do you want? Oh, here we go.
Mine's more common sense. I agree with that. I mean, if that machine is good on oil, then I'm behind that thing. And I agree with Kim, but boy, I'd like to see it work.
All right, what the heck was your motion since you've been yapping about this?
So that should be, uh, so council directs administration to do a shoulder pull, uh, appropriate crown, uh, and take the millings, uh, from the Old Transcanada and direct, and have the, uh, the road reshaped prior to the end of July to put the millings on top as a top dress.
Before Acon strips out.
As, as gravel, doesn't get packed. You're just using it as.
As a top dress.
Top dress gravel, dust control, not, it doesn't get packed.
So that makes sense, Council Shane? Is that, that's, okay.
When you use millings like that, does it stay on the road like gravel? Or is it, or does it tend to work itself off?
As gravel, all it is is oil gravel.
Okay, so that's motion we have on the floor. One question before I ask for the vote. Does this fall into our budget that this is going to work or?
Through the chair. We were planning on removing that, that surface because there is value to it. And so if it's council's desire to place it instead of only stop, only handling it once, if it's their desire to move it into a, um, more of a test area, because that's what this would be, because we've never done this before. I've done it in other areas, but, uh, not here at Cypress County, but it would be considered a test, because obviously over time, we'd be adding gravel and we'd be mixing it, but we'd have a stockpile up there. But we could make it fit within our current budget approved by, uh, the grant.
Approved by the grant, okay. Because we have, I guess budget wasn't what I should have been asking. We have a road plan and you have a whole system that we're doing. This obviously is not in that road plan. So is it going to bump something out of there? Or are you going to be able to make it all work?
Through the chair. That's why I specified it'd be a test area, because that's, we'll see how it works with the abatement. But we can make the test area work. If we're going to implement it to a full blown program, that would change the parameters, but for what we're doing, we could do that in this year's budget.
But the question is, is that, so when you're doing the shoulder pull and the reshaping, are you taking your resources off another road?
That's what I'm asking.
To, to go there. So do you have enough resources or are you going to have to contract this out?
Through the chair. Yeah, we'll have enough resources. We were planning on doing the shoulder pull, but it wasn't until, we're just going to have to juggle things around, timeline. But, uh, we were planning on doing another shoulder pull, but we'll do this in.
So the shoulder pull was in this year's plan?
Tied with the, with the pavement, because it would look kind of silly having fourteen meters of gravel road tied to a nine meter pavement top. So we were planning on doing the shoulder pull anyway, due to the fact that we didn't pave all the way in, just to make it look uniform.
And just to make it crystal clear, so.
That's correct.
Just so that, so this will be bumped up and, and another project will, will be delayed because of the timing.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's what I was asking, because you guys already have your program in place for the year, so when we do this to you with a motion, it's. Better be, but everybody can say if somebody complains that it's Shane that whined enough to.
Yep.
Have it all moved.
I'm, I'm okay taking one for Shane, you know? If it's going to make his day, I'm going to.
So I guess we'll be voting on the infrared heater next? All right, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, well, Leslie Ann knows what it is. Pull the shoulders in on that and re-put the shavings back on. Vote? Carried. Uh, ten point four, Terrell Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is the emergent, uh, concern that, uh, has been brought to, to council for your consideration, uh, the Dunmore Junction liability concerns. So the lands, Dunmore Junction, uh, over there, uh, their, uh, administration has placed no trespassing signs, however, that is not working at all. Law enforcement has, is touring the area more frequently. However, we still have individuals that are riding their bikes and doing tricks and turns and all that jazz on the lands, and that's not, uh, what it is for. Uh, it then puts a tremendous liability on Cypress County. Administration is suggesting that a, the area is fenced with a three strand barbed wire fence and, uh, the cost of it would be just under, would be just under twenty thousand dollars. It's twenty-seven hundred meters in length and, uh, that is our recommendation to you. Something has to be done.
Okay, thank you. Just give everybody a bit, a bit of a heads up. I was there over in Eagle Ridge Thursday night, about nine o'clock, picking up a bounce castle and, yep, there were the bikes out there. They just unload them off the trucks. They come from in town and they're ripping around out there, carrying on. It is a liability to the county. That's why wilds were trying to push that fence over and keep them off, because they don't want to be sued either. And you know, they're coming after the one with the biggest pocket if something goes wrong out there. And even nine o'clock at night, it's starting to get dark and they're still ripping around and it's just cringe, you can just see that collision coming and a midair jump or something. I don't have a problem with Terrell Lynn putting this on. Dustin?
Someone move it?
Nope, nothing.
I'll move, but I want to move the alternative recommendation, uh, number one, and do a four wire fence instead of a three wire fence. And my reasoning behind that is in case we don't do anything with that land for some time, we could take and rent it out for grazing, because a four wire fence holds cows in a lot better than a three wire fence does.
Yeah.
Going to use for water.
Yeah, it, it, it's another two thousand.
Shane? Vote your mics off.
Would a guy be able to put the odd sign saying up caution, electric fence?
Two twenty?
So in case they want to cut it.
This fence is hot watered to four eighty?
Yep.
You can haul the water.
Yeah, there'd be no water.
There's no water there. Always is.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor for, uh, who?
So the plan would be to fence the whole circumference of that land that we bought, and I'm just wondering, um, why would, do we have to do it down where we're actually thinking of doing some development, which is towards the highway? Um, like if we did that area where they're doing it, plus maybe down almost to the number one along the one twenty, do we have to go across that front of it? Because.
Very good point. We talked about that and.
Other than cattle.
Yeah, so phase, like, so it'd be like in between phase, uh, like one, like in, kind of in the middle of phase two, not all the way down, because we talked about that, because the goal is to have the road in by this fall. That's, that's roughed in, uh, that's the goal. And then I, when we said, we were discussing it, um, the input was that if we don't do all of that, all they're going to do is keep moving to the south or to the north.
Yeah.
And they're going to, until we develop it.
It's nothing but a ripped out fence.
We can always keep moving it.
That, good point. And on third half, we could put a gate, the gate, like a gate there on the end, so we could move equipment in and out. But, yeah, that's, I thought of that as well and, yeah.
I would do some preemptive planning, wherever you're deciding for that road to go in and out, that's where, that's where the gates go. Yeah.
But yeah, Richard, they're just going to move to the north.
Sure. Actually, there's the question.
Um, is, are we including the chunk on the other side of the one twenty as well?
That's already fenced.
Is it already fenced? I don't think it is.
It's not fenced.
Well, I'm just thinking if we're, if we're looking at controlling public access to county owned lands, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to maybe come back with something to do that one as well. Yeah.
But most people don't know it's our land. Like they look, I'm sure they're assuming it's farmers, a farmer owns that, because it's on the other side of the highway. Right? So you look at it and you go, well.
I guess not.
We can plant by ear or just do it now.
I think just leave it for now and wait.
It, it's cheaper to get them to do it while they're out there doing it than it is to get them to come back and do it later. So that's where I'm thinking it might not be a horrible idea to do it right away. Because I, I feel if we're not going to use that property, it may almost be better off to maybe lease it out to an adjacent landowner and let them take care of it for us than it is for us to have a grass patch fire hazard sitting there.
And what's stopping them, if we fence off this side and restrict access to it, what's going to stop them from going to the other side? Like, I mean, yeah, some of them think it's a farmer's land, but sooner or later, it's going to get out there and they might just, you know? I'm, I'm on, in favor of fencing all of it.
You got a picture of all of it, Les? So that blue area is all ours?
It's pretty much south of the one twenty where it comes off the highway.
It's only about thirty, what is it? How many acres? It's like thirty, forty acres, right?
I like the idea of renting it to the farmer. I mean, does it have to be in grass and let them break it all up and farm it? Then, I mean, then nobody's going to be running around in there.
And tell, so, tell, tell time it's developed. Pretty sure Doug would take that. So it's pretty good junk.
That's it there in the red, that's ours?
Well, that's what you're talking about there.
That's not much. Jeffrey, you had something?
Yeah, all I was going to say is you can see on the air photo there, the.
Yeah, all I was going to say is you can see on the air photo there that the drainage from the south comes right through there, crosses Township Road one twenty and flows right through the parcel that, where the, that we're developing. And so, yeah, the terrain in there is pretty rough. So I think it, for some, to, for a farmer to go in there and actually crop it would be pretty difficult. But, but yeah, it would make sense to fence it as well. In my opinion.
Yeah, probably would, keep them all out.
Want me to measure it quick and I can tell you what the perimeter is? Or we can just add that on the budget?
It's not, it's flat up there. It may drain, but it's still flat up there.
Yeah, but they always seem to get in and find ways to make ditches.
That's a lot of freaking money to spend.
That just invites them.
Uh, perimeter's one point one six miles, so add another ten grand, roughly. One, one point one six, because it's about ten thousand bucks a mile is what fence is right now. Yeah. So if you, I can give it to you in meters. Eighteen hundred and seventy-two.
Ninety percent of that is labor. Yep. That's, that's not impressive, a lawyer. They just put it for half a mile. Two thousand, less than two thousand.
Well, I could do that too, but unless you and I are going out there to put a fence in.
I think I might take the contract.
They, uh, it's a lot of money, but I agree with Richard, it's cheaper than a lawyer if somebody's on there and we're paying for somebody breaking their neck. We're doing our-
Dan, can you take a pointer and just show Keith and I exactly where the fence would go? Well, I guess you can see the red now, right, can you Keith?
Here low. I know, I can't, my pointer, it's because of the crappy pointer.
Here by the exit side. Keep going up.
I'm just trying to make the pointer work, where our pointer- Highway one's fenced, so it's right here, go around the one twenty, and then straight down, around, and straight up here. It comes into the line with that Township Road one twenty right away. Isn't there a fence on that side?
Yeah, there's already a fence, but it's twenty feet out.
So, people just kind of get confused a little bit when they look at it. So with Wilds and the previous owners, they put a fence, yeah, here's the fence, right? No. Yeah, they put a fence along here, but you can see that this is all of our property here still, right? Because the, these owners didn't really care, whatever, they're trying to keep the motorbikes off. So there is a fence here that we would just leave, because it's not hurting anything.
So are we going to run off of that fence then, for now? Or are you going to put it on the actual property line for that twenty ground?
I think we'd-
You've got to put it on the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what are you going to do with the old fence then? Leave it there?
Leave it.
Just move the damn thing over and use it.
That's what I would do. That saves a bunch of material if we move it. Well, that's the thing, you're going to have a mile, three quarters mile of fence right there.
It's not very old.
No, it's only four years old, five years old. Well, they got to pay for half the fence anyhow, so they're going to tell you to use it.
Well, it's not theirs, it's, I don't, how is it theirs anymore anyways? If we own the property, that fence would have come with.
Oh, yeah, it's our fence.
It's our fence. Yeah, it's our fence. They just stuck it on the wrong, they didn't stick it on the property line, apparently.
I think they did it for Slayer's cows and I think for grazing for vegetation control. So that was, which, it was- They didn't have to pay taxes on it if there was cows on it. Oh, they paid taxes for hanging the fence.
Yeah.
We all know how the egg pays.
Yeah.
So they're using part of our land already?
They are on our land, yeah.
Because there's cows there now.
They should be paying us for grazing.
But the guy using my land.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, so just before we were doing the conceptual, we were trying to play nice with all of the neighbors. And there was, he usually puts like, what, six or seven head in there? And just because we knew that we wouldn't be doing any work into the fall, I have an agreement with the adjacent landowner that they just put a, the same one that put them in there last year. Yeah.
Well, if you, if-
Yeah.
Thirty day exit clause. So they, we tell them today they'll be out by the first of August. Yeah, and it was until October.
So then why can't we just leave that fence there and then just do the one twenty and down the bottom and then-
Yeah.
They're not going in there anyway, so.
No.
So the farmer, they're coming in off the highway then?
They're coming, they're coming off the east side on one twenty.
Yeah, right on that curve there is where they're coming in.
We filled a bunch of the, took the hills out and filled everything, but they managed to put them back in themselves.
That would save your money to do your other side of the fence.
Yeah.
It'd be the east side.
To do your other side of the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they, those are just adjoining up to their fence for now. Because eventually it's all going to be developed for sale of sorts and you deal with it as we get there.
I, that's what I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just do the two sides and the other end, leave that fence in for now. Next spring, we can move it over onto our property line if we want.
Depends how many lots we sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, so things, if something happens there, then we can move the fence in, we'll have money to move it with.
Exactly.
Isn't she looking into the little crystal ball a little bit, eh?
So I'm just, still going to just do it thirty two thousand, because it covers off the whole thing.
Thirty two thousand, but keep that one fenced in.
Yeah.
Up to thirty two thousand.
Yeah. Because then it just, must have some summer students that can pound staples.
Yeah, workman's compensation, isn't it, hit your hands?
Kate, so I have a motion on the floor from Dustin to fence that in, our property in, keep the bikes and stuff off. Do you want? Do you want signs on, no trespassing on that new fence? Oh, they're already on? Will be, will be shot if caught on property.
We don't have those.
That'll be a good one to get.
This property is protected by a Smith and Wesson. Caution wild hippos?
All right.
How much money do I get?
Thirty-two.
Up to thirty-two. We should only use twelve.
Yeah. We can buy heavy hitters.
All right, vote. Carrie.
I'd like to make a comment before we adjourn.
Well, I'm not adjourned and we're going in camera.
Oh, well, before we go in camera, I'm a little upset with Steve. He just mentioned about putting a cow on land for-
Yeah, because then it's free.
Well, then it gets down to agriculture, now, now Richard's looking for a cow.
Going to keep them inside here and big shop or?
Michelle's- Michelle's moving to go in camera. Michelle's moving to go in camera. Vote. Carrie. One of these times I'll be doing something, you guys aren't gonna freaking put your hands up and I'll get caught seeing it's carried. Meeting is adjourned.